Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 9th meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Zoning Board of Adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of zoning ordinance for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darlin, Chairman of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today, from your left to right, are Mike Galliart, Bridget Boyd Carlson, myself, and Jeff Blumker. Staff present today are Laura Berkeley, Scott Copes, and Attorney Dick Davidson. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to this standard is that staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. And I ask that you, you need to stay at the podium because directly above you, the ceiling is where the microphone is, so it picks up and records everything. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question, but I'll ask that you keep your responses limited to that specific question. All right. Any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are affirmed. First order of business, our first order of business is requests for special use 24-03 Denoz Holdings LLC on behalf of RC, CRC Recovery, Inc. at 111 East 50th Street for special use to establish an outpatient, non-residential drug treatment clinic on property zone C2 corridor commercial as required in Table 17.08-1, and this is in Ward 7. Are we doing 1 and 2 together, or? Okay, separately, all right. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Laura Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services. So on the screen, you will see a star as the area where the proposed drug treatment clinic would be housed. It's about two-thirds of the building. There's another aerial view of it, marking where it is. And the property and the subject property is outlined in yellow. Here's the zoning map, so it's a mixture of zoning districts around there, C2, C3, which is general commercial, COP is our commercial office park, and RMF on the bottom left is residential multifamily that is a detention basin owned by the city. So drug treatment clinics require special use in C2, which is why we are here today. And then one of the requirements is all activities would be conducted, must be conducted completely within the leased building space. So principally, use standards in our zoning code read as follows: A drug treatment clinic, a drug alcohol treatment facility, residential halfway house and/or homeless shelter require state license. This standard will be met pending approval. Drug treatment clinic, drug alcohol facilities require health services and congregate living permit in accordance with Section 17.14.14. The standard has been met. Number three, for residential facilities or drug facilities are limited in the hours between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. This standard does not apply, it is not a residential facility. And then number four, unenclosed waiting area for intake appointments is required. No queuing may occur on any public right-of-way or any parking lot. The standard is met. So the area in green was the notification area. Ten notices were sent. We did receive two comments, and then we did forward those on to you after the packets went out. So in findings, petitioner's proposed location design meets the special use requirements. This use is compatible with adjacent land uses and type of development. The proposed special use is in accordance with the criteria of the special use. I just want to give a little bit of background information on the facility itself, so that it's available for everybody. So the purpose would be to provide treatment, assistance, and counseling to those suffering from opioid dependency or addiction. All patients would be seen indoors, and no waiting lines or queues will be outdoor or in any parking areas. The operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The proposed treatment clinic will likely be open from 5:30 to 2:00 p.m. on weekdays, Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., or sorry, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and closed on Sundays. These hours align with the hours of surrounding businesses and will not cause after-hour disturbances. And the clinic will be completely outpatient. So I just wanted to share that additional information, make sure that you had that in front of you.
Okay.
So for staff recommendation, as the board adopts the findings and approve request SU24-03, subject to the following conditions. One, a hardship variant shall be required to reduce distance separation from adjacent residential zoning, as has been proposed in HV24-06, which you will hear next, from 300 feet to 270 feet. Two, no activities of the clinic shall be allowed outside of the leased building area excepting use of the parking lot area for parking of clients, visitors, employees, and allowance of solid waste collection. And three, should the clinic have a pattern of noncompliance with condition number two above, the Zoning Board of Adjustment reserves the right to rehear or reconsider the special use and/or revisit the conditions of the special use.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of staff from the board?
Sure. Laura, could you go to, I think it was slide number five? Yes. Is, does it need, a special use is needed for no matter what district it's in, zoned in, correct?
Correct.
And there's no permitted district that it can just go without any special use?
Correct.
Okay.
We do have a companion use called social service center, which wouldn't be actual treatment. It's more of counseling services associated with it that would be allowed by right in those districts, but for the actual medical treatment, it is by special use.
Sure. And then, and then the buffer, I guess my next question is about the buffer, the encroachment onto that, if you could go to the overhead slide, just so we're clear as to where that's encroaching?
We will, we'll talk about it a little bit more in the next.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Getting a little ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. So that residential multifamily is actually a detention, it's a detention pond. It's owned by the city. It's not actually developable area, and it's encroaching about, the distance separation requirement is encroaching about 30 feet onto that property. So the next request would be to reduce that separation distance from a residential district by 30 feet from 300 to 270.
Very good, thank you.
Laura, could you give us the hours of operation again?
Sure. It will likely be open 5:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on weekdays, Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and closed on Sundays.
Jeff, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Laura, do you know, do we have other facilities similar to this in the City of Davenport?
Not, so the requirement to have a special use was new with the 2019 zoning code change, so this is, be the first one that requires a special use permit. So if there are others in the city, they are, they're nonconforming in the special use component of them.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions of the staff, is the applicant present?
Yeah.
All right. If you go ahead and step up to the podium, introduce yourself and, and present your It's all right if you hang up on us. We still have you outnumbered by one.
Thanks, Chair Darlin. I'm Eric Hartman. I'm here with representatives of CRC Recovery, Inc., who's going to be the operator of the facility. And this is Dan Pearson and Camilla Wisbauer, and they're going to say a few words about the operation to the council, and, yeah.
I'll let them take it from there.
Thanks, Eric, and thank you for having us. I'm Dan Pearson. I'm the Regional Vice President with CRC, also known as Acadia Healthcare. For those who maybe aren't familiar with Acadia Healthcare, we are the largest behavioral healthcare company provider in the country with about 100 hospitals and 160 clinics across the United States and Puerto Rico. As I think we probably all know, we're living in a mental health crisis, you know, one of the U.S. Surgeon General, Dr. Vivek Murthy's top priorities, and coupled with an opioid epidemic. I think in the most recent annual publicly available data, 2022, there were 84,000 folks who died from opioid deaths. I always try to put that in context, and I think I noticed that Moline on the other side of the river has like 42,000 people, so it'd be about twice the size of Moline in 2022. And I imagine that many of us in this room have a, know somebody who is, who has struggled with addiction. The good news is treatment does work, and we've got statistics that we're seeing that show that, and some that I find very powerful is after six months of treatment, employment goes up by 49%, recidivism goes down by 30%, and folks are about eight times more likely to stay alive. And so when Laura was giving her overview, she mentioned the counseling piece. That's such a huge part of what we do, and Camilla, our Regional Director, will be able to speak to that more, but helping folks kind of develop those tools to really be great contributors to the neighborhood and the community. So thanks again for having us. Happy to take any questions and turn it over to Camilla.
Hello. So my name is Camilla Wisbauer, so I'm the Regional Director of Operations for Michigan and Iowa, and I'm happy to be here. I've never been in front of the zoning board before, so I'm a little nervous maybe, but I'm happy to be here. So we're excited to be here and to hopefully be a part of your community. We operate from 5 o'clock or 5:30 in the morning, and we dose until 11 o'clock. We are open until 2, but between 11:30 and 2 o'clock, it's mostly counseling, so our patients come before 5:30 in the morning. Eric, you want to go ahead?
I guess just generally, but. I just wanted to say, there's, there's three standards that I think the Chair, the committee is going to, the board is going to consider today, is the, with the establishment and maintenance of the operation, endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. I think there's going to be some speculation that has been received in the comments, but we don't have any empirical evidence or data showing that it would endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. I think it's pretty clear that standard's met here. The other standard is, is it compatible with the general land use of the area? I think it's pretty clear that it is. It's a commercial area. There's, there's, just like over in Bettendorf on 53rd Street, where there's commercial, Margenesis has its operations, there's going to be health services facilities and commercial areas, and we're accustomed to that. And is it consistent with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance? While the ordinance was amended in 2019 to require a special use permit, and it's clearly contemplated in the ordinance. So we're grateful for the opportunity to be here, and we hope that the board will approve the application.
Thank you. So a couple of questions off the top. Assuming you guys have done some research, probably Dan and Camilla, are you aware of any other facilities like this in this community?
I'm not. I believe that there's one in the greater Quad City metros, but I'd have to double-check which town that's in.
My understanding is the only one's in Rock Island.
Okay. And typically, you know, what is the, I guess, size of community, or the size of community that generates enough need, certain percentage of need, for such a clinic?
Yeah, we typically view 20,000, population of 20,000 as a need. I'll share that we're currently building a clinic in Delaware, Wisconsin, that has a population of about 9,000. So it really does depend on, you know, the needs of that community, and then also the proximal areas about who might be coming in for it.
Where do you get your referrals from?
A lot of it's word of mouth, and a lot of it's from the larger healthcare community, primary care physicians. We also partner with a lot of social work organizations and first responders. And Camilla, feel free to add anything I missed there.
Yeah, I mean, we work really closely with hospitals, police departments, fire departments. We really become a part of the community. We work with, you know, different counseling offices, you know, anyone and everyone. We have addiction, you know, everywhere, and so, you know, we create a bunch of community partners, and we work really closely with the community as a whole.
Okay. In and around your other facilities, be it midwest or nationally, how much, how much crime do you see on your property or in the neighboring community tick up, go down, or what may the case be?
Yeah, very little, and Camilla has the experience of running a center herself, so I'll let her add in, but if I could just quickly piggyback on something that Camilla mentioned from Laura's introduction in terms of our hours, you know, we do have the early morning hours, and that's largely because most of our folks are coming on their way to work. You know, these are, these are dentists, farmers, attorneys, you know, all walks of life, a lot of parents on the way to drop their kiddos off at school, in terms of the patients, you know, that we, again, it's all walks of life. And I reviewed a couple of those letters, and I think I saw something along loitering and like rest assured, like any medical clinic, you know, we're a highly secure clinic, and we don't allow loitering. But to your question, Chair, Chairman, you know, could you talk a little bit about, you know, as a center, how, how much crime you see?
I wouldn't see, I mean, patients are so grateful to be able to gain treatment that they take really good care. You know, they want to, they want to come there. We've never, we really don't have any issues like on the property at all.
Okay. I'll open it up. Bridget was first.
I have a question about, are your patients subsidized, grant-funded, or do they pay fee for the services?
They pay, just like going to the doctor's office, so we take insurance for, yeah.
Yes, what, what would you say the average number of patients that you have at, at your facilities? Or is, is that kind of an unfair question?
No, it's a fair, well, it does, it does vary, and it does depend, you know? But I think, you know, it, what our vision for the clinic at Davenport would be, you know, at any, at any given point, what do you think, Camilla, maybe 20 patients?
Yeah, I would say so, at max.
Okay. At max, maximum?
Yeah. I mean, you know, coming in and out of the facility.
Sure.
And at the same time, yes, I believe so.
And, and maybe to just add on that, a lot of our patients utilize virtual counseling or prescription medication.
Sure.
They don't, they don't come in person. For the folks who do come in person, they're very quick visits, and like I said, it's typically early in the morning on their way to work.
Sure.
Jeff?
Thank you. We're good.
Okay. I'm good. All right, I think, I think we can go ahead and have you sit back down, and we'll move on to the next stage. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? See none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak opposed to the request? Go ahead and come on up.
Well, thank you for having us here. My name is Mike Wells. I'm the General Manager of an adjacent business. It's Campers RV. And this is Greg Walker, who's also with Campers RV, Campers RV. And so, you know, the concerns that we have a little bit is the, the location, you know, being a retail, retail business, we have a lot of recreational vehicles that are outside our parking lots. You know, in the past, just from the location where we've been, we put in a lot of extra safety and implementation to protect our business and the products, and, and thanks, you know, extra fencing, extra lighting. We've paid security systems, security businesses to come in to help secure or drive through our properties at different hours of the day and in the evenings, et cetera, just because of concerns we've had in the past. And, you know, our concern is, during the day, we do open up these recreational vehicles, trailers, motorhomes of, you know, and we have our guests come in. Our concern is to help, you know, the need for extra policing possibly, if somebody's walking through the property, is coming from Brady Street exactly, you know, there's no sidewalks on Brady Street if they're coming from that direction. A lot of times, we see people walk through our parking lots to get over to 50 East 50th Street and continue on up to a bus stop that's, if it's on Welcome Way. So we do see a lot of pass-through and a lot of walk-through, you know, and I don't want to tie the two in together, but it is a concern for us as far as policing that. We do a lot of special events in our dealership as well. You know, we're a retail business, we welcome people in. We do events where we'll host food. We'll have, you know, food trucks, and we'll have food inside and drinks and beverage and entertainment. And, and, you know, a concern is if, you know, being such a close vicinity to, to our location, you know, kind of policing that a little bit as well can get a little uncomfortable possibly. You know, somebody, we are a retail business, you know, anybody's welcome to come in, but we want to make sure it's, it's to the comfort of the majority of our customers that are there for the reason of our business, and it could create a little bit of an uncomfort in our mind for that. You know, we, go ahead. You know, so that's a couple of our concerns, you know. If we need to increase added security, you know, that, that does cost us additional as well. And we're very concerned of property values maybe changing just because of the, of the system, you know, and to our business owners. I'm not a business owner, but I, my responsibility is to protect our business as a General Manager. And so that is a concern for, for that as well, you know, for us, and I'll let Greg chat a little bit as well.
Sure. And I noticed we have three minutes, so we'll try to go fast.
I'm Greg Walker. I'm responsible for six of our locations. Campers has 38 across most of the eastern U.S. We're not professionals at this, we, so we're just here to give our input, and we really appreciate the work that you guys do. We're very grateful to be part of the community. We're a taxpaying business, and we are very sympathetic to the, the cause and exactly what the petitioner, if that's the right term, is, is wanting to do. I just don't know the right location. So really appreciate the purpose. It is a, again, we're not professionals, but special use, seems like it would take into account the context and the area. It doesn't seem like the right area when you have operating businesses very close, and we are very concerned, so we're staunchly opposed, but we do appreciate it. So we appreciate you guys' time.
All right. Any, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You alluded a little bit about, you know, people walking through your facility and all that. Have you had any theft problems or?
Absolutely. We have. You know, exterior, you know, we've got a partial fence. We tried to fence in the majority. We just, you know, currently, directly to the, to the north of that, it used to be the car wash, we tore that down. That's not part of our property as well. We fenced that in to extend our parking for our service customers. We have, you know, we've had catalytic converter problems, the thefts of catalytic converters. You know, we've actually found in the past, we found units that have been broken into behind our fence where they've climbed under a fence, gained access to an RV that was in for service, and had been parked there for a long time waiting for parts for, except before it got repaired, for example, and kind of became a little shelter for them. And basically, you know, it had ruined an RV before. We've, we've had units that, with our service that we do for, for security, there's many times I'll get a call at 2:30, 3 o'clock, 5 o'clock in the morning, hey, I just wanted to let you know that there was a, you know, we found a person sleeping underneath your, your RV, or they had gained entrance to your RV. How do you want us to secure that? Do you want to come in? So it, it does happen much more than you think. You know, when these RVs are opened up as well during the day in an early, they do have full, full, you know, features in them, and you don't want to think this, and I may be going the wrong direction, but they do have bathrooms, et cetera, but they're not readily usable until they're actually ready to be used with water systems and everything added. But that's happened in the past as well, so we, we really do have to police and monitor. We're just really concerned of the increase that that may cause for us. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Which location are you in reference?
Top, top, top right.
Yeah, so if you look on this slide, at the very top, right above the C3, all of that location, and then the parcel located 128 is also contiguous parking for us. So we're directly across the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll see if I have anything for, for right now.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? All right. Applicant, do you have any final questions or final comments?
I'm so sorry, we did forget one thing.
Come on.
Ah, gee. We are, we are, yeah, we'll get better when we do this again, if ever. We also spoke with some of the other business owners around, Matt Fisher. Matt Fisher, who owns the location directly to the east, that has a parking lot adjacent.
We have, we have a comment from him.
He said he was, he was out of town, he wished he could be here, so.
We got it in record.
Thank you very much.
Applicant, if I?
Just very briefly?
Yeah, could you come, I do have a question for you, so if you wouldn't mind. That's kind of prompted question. So go ahead, first with what you.
Well, I just wanted to say I heard a few things. It sounded like a lot of security that, a lot of security concerns were raised that weren't really based in any fact, but seemed to be speculative. And then it also seemed like security measures have already been taken by this business to deter those security concerns. So I guess I'm, seemed a little circular to me, so I'm not following that, and I don't believe that that's a concern that the committee should sink too much teeth into or give too much merit to. Moreover, the comment about property values, you know, this is a healthcare clinic, and I think the old business was a Sherwin-Williams that looked pretty dumpy. I mean, we're planning to, to come in and to improve the business and should improve property values. And as far as I know, RV, the RV business isn't for sale, they're intending to stay here. So I, you know, I think we're going to improve the property values. So I just want to impress that, you know, a lot of what was presented seemed like speculation.
So a question that I had, that I wanted to bring you back up for, and what you said earlier maybe changed my perception of what, of what this practice was, so, but more directly, how many of your patients are homeless? Is there a ballpark percentage?
I don't think, I don't think we could ballpark that. I mean, most of our, most of our patients are just common folk, you know, like they come, you know, most of them come before work. That's why our, I would say our rush hour is between 5:30 in the morning to leave, because most of them are going to work. It's really hard to say. I mean, we do have a homeless population at times, but most of them are just, they're your nurse, they're your teacher, you're a construction worker, they're just, you know.
That's what I got from your earlier comments.
Yeah, they're just absolutely anyone.
Chairman, I suspect your question would probably best be answered with, with this question. So you indicated earlier that you're a fee-based service, is that correct? It would, do you have, do you do any, any services for, via, via subsidies, Medicaid or government subsidies? And so do you have a breakdown of that, what's the percentage of, of?
We, we take all types of insurance, so Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance. I think some clinics in different parts of the country, the states have offered some grants for folks who maybe need additional funding. Like I think in Michigan, there's a grant like that. I'm not aware of a grant like that in Iowa, but.
Yeah, we get grants like that in Iowa as well, but, you know, we, we, we want to serve anyone who needs help.
Sure.
Whoever that person is.
Chairman, could I just piggyback on to one thing?
Sure.
In terms of, I appreciate, I appreciated the points and appreciated the point around an event, and I'm, I'm confident it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue, but perhaps most helpful to hear would be that, you know, the vast majority of our patients are, are done before the time of standard business opens. You know, the vast majority are either in and out, like by 6:00 or maybe 7:00 a.m. Camilla, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, or, you know, doing the, the virtual take-home prescription care, so.
I also had one thing to add regarding your question about homeless and drug treatment. I do know that, that the federal government has provided some provisions for other healthcare providers to provide some level of drug treatment in their own clinics. So community healthcare does also provide some drug treatment. does also provide some drug treatment. They are doing so in the downtown area as well and I think that they actually have grant funding specifically to address the homeless populations in terms of drug addiction and other healthcare services, so I wanted to make sure that information was out there.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Oh, I think you asked a question.
Okay, all right.
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
You're in, what did you say, two-thirds of the old Sherwin-Williams building, a third of it?
That's about right.
Is there anything in the other half of it or is it, will that other part be empty?
I think it's empty, I would need to double check.
I think the Sherwin-Williams operations, the retail operations still running correctly.
Oh, it is?
They're still in operation.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And if it's helpful, I can add, many of our clinics are in much more densely populated or retail businesses. I never receive any complaints from our neighbors.
All right. Thank you all. All right, board discussion time. Thoughts?
I think this site is probably as contained as one could expect it to be, really. I mean, it's naturally contained to the south and to the west. It doesn't, you know, that area doesn't encourage pedestrian traffic and so that, you know, that will mitigate any kind of loitering that you might be concerned about. And on top of that, the petitioner is deeply experienced in operating a clinic such as this, so I just, I can't imagine if there'll be any problems and really should be a community asset.
Right, yeah, my question about the homeless really had to do with the campers and RV issues that they're currently experiencing, people sleeping in or under whatever campers But hearing what's probably more the clientele or probably a smaller percentage of homeless, especially if CHC is managing the homeless population, probably more downtown oriented geographically, so I don't know that this facility would increase the incidences that campers and RV might be experiencing now, so that's brought up that line of questioning. Okay, any?
No, I have to agree with all those comments.
Okay, so what?
And I'd also just like to say, I'm a very pro-business citizen, so I'm absolutely sensitive to the concerns of the neighboring businesses, but having some knowledge of operating an operation like this, I just, I just don't think you'll have any concerns.
I've been in camper's RV more than once myself, so yeah, I would not want to do anything to disrupt that business, I don't think this would. So with that, we're point of taking a motion to approve SU 24-03 with the, what the gentleman says, recommendations or conditions on the approval, the three, the three recommendations, so a request to approve SU 24-03 with the three recommendations.
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve SU 24-03 with the staff's three conditions.
I'll second.
Roll call for, please.
Blumker?
Yes.
Galliard?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So that's new business item number one. So for item number two, which was one of the conditions from, this would be request HV 24-06, same request or, same petitioner, and this is dealing with the hardship variance to decrease the health services use separation from 300 feet to 270 feet. This comes from code section 17.08.030.7, requires the proposed clinic to be 300 feet from a residentially zoned property, residential property is a, the residential property in question is a non-buildable outlot that is used for stormwater detention. So if I got the staff report, please.
All right, so once again, to go over the location of the property, it's on your screen for you in the starred area, so the request is to decrease the buffer for health services from residential zoning districts. That requirement's 300 feet, the request is to reduce that to 270 feet. The nearest actual buildable residential lot is 625 feet from the property line. So once again, there's the zoning map with the notification area. In greater detail, here is the non-buildable stormwater outlot for you, that black line on the map right there gets you to that one lot just off of Colony Drive right there, so that's the closest, that lot is 625 feet away. From a different point of view, that's the buffer line onto the non-buildable stormwater lot over there, that line, that line would be the typical buffer line, so that's the 300 feet. Again, there's the notification area, the comments we received were specific to the use overall, not to the separation reduction. So in terms of recommendations or findings, that the zoning code does result in a hardship as applied to the proposed use, physical and topographical conditions of the site do limit the use, unique circumstances have been established and protection of essential character has been established. So staff recommends the board adopt staff's findings and approve request HV 24-06 as proposed.
All right, thank you. So this, this issue is based solely on the distance between the proposed property and residential property, in this case, a residential property can never hold a residence?
Correct, yep. So the way the code reads, it says residential zoning district, it doesn't say developed lot, so while the detention area is zoned RMF, I think it was generally an oversight, it probably would be more appropriately to be zoned open space since it is a detention area.
I was going to ask why it was zoned residential in the first place?
Yep, so when we redid our 2019 code and zoning map, I don't think they went into that level of detail to determine for sure what was detention based in, which, what was not. I think they saw large lot, potential access to Colony Drive and had, I think it may have been zoned RMF before and so they just didn't change it instead of recommending it to go to open space. So instead of correcting it to detention for open space, they just left it as RMF for residential multifamily.
And the city's currently the owner?
We are the owner.
And there is no possible way that could be reversed, built upon?
Correct, so that detention pond is to resolve stormwater issues associated with the mall property, it was actually given to us by Maesrich for that purpose.
All right, any questions from board to staff?
Already had my question answered, thank you.
Okay, so the petitioner, your turn to present this petition as well.
I can come up and say something, but it'd be largely repetitive.
If you would, please. Does it get you on the record?
Yeah, so as part of this special use application.
As a difference, you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Eric Hardman, I'm here with CRC Recovery, Inc. and we're here to express our support for the hardship variance and support of our special use application. We think it's pretty clear based on the evidence presented that this lot is maybe erroneously zoned residential, that it can never be built upon as a residence and that there's no harm to the community in reducing this 300-foot requirement by 30 feet to accommodate the special use that the committee just, or that the board just granted.
Okay.
So we support the hardship variance.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak opposed to this request? All right. There were, there were no other, I guess, comments, but do you have any last comments needed? Okay, so a board discussion?
I wouldn't want to have to walk through that parcel.
No. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve request HV 24-06.
Motion to approve HV 24-06.
Second, roll call.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Blumker?
Yes.
Galliard?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, new business, item number three, this is request for hardship variance 24-07 of Streamline Architects on behalf of Project Renewal at 513 Warren Street for hardship variance to locate a portion of the proposed building 3.2 feet into the required site buffer yard. The observed buffer yard will be 11.8 feet should the variance be approved, section 17.11.080. Point A, point two requires a 15-foot buffer yard between proposed community center use and the adjacent dwelling units. Property is zoned R4C residential. Staff report, please.
Laura Berkeley Development Neighbors Services, it's on the screen, you see 513 Warren In the yellow area, so this is related to, back in December, I think, the Project Renewal came for hardship variance related to off-street parking requirements. So what ended up happening is there are some overhead power lines along that alley to the north up here and so when Project Renewal bought the property, there was a house on it, you can see it in this aerial here up in this corner. So our zoning setback requirements only five feet from that property line, however, with the overhead power lines that is increased due to OSHA standards for working on power lines, so when they tore the building down, they needed to meet those new OSHA requirements that, so Mid-American has denied any kind of variance from that, so really what the request is to shift the building to the south, basically a little over three feet, which would mean it would, the overall project would be encroaching into what's the buffer area from non-residential uses in a residential zoning district. So that yellow area is the required buffer yard location, landscape buffer yard requirement. You can see it here in red as well from the proposed site plan, that what is encroaching into the buffer yard area is, it is the, basically a covered porch, kind of, it's a, it's a hardscaped area and so the plan is to grilling and some outdoor areas within that space, so it would have, it would have a canopy over it and it would be patio space there. Yep, so the highly, I'll speak for Scott since he can't, that canopy area is right there, if you can see it, so that's highlighting that. So the notification was sent out to property owners within 200 feet, 15 were sent, we received no comments from that mailing. In terms of findings, application ordinance creating the hardship has been met, there is a physical and topographical condition that limits the site, there are unique circumstances that have been established and protection of essential character has been established. Staff recommends approval of requests as proposed.
Thank you. Can you go back to the elevation slide?
Yeah.
So the oning is attached to the building, therefore it's considered a permanent structure?
Right, it is, the buffer requirement says no building, no pavement, period, in that area, so the canopy structure and the pavement underneath, this view is the area that would be encroaching, so this is the south elevation of that building, so you can see it from the side and that's what it would look like if you're looking at it, the south elevation.
And then what's the, what's the property to the south that it's encroaching upon?
It's an apartment building.
And we've received nothing back from that owner?
Correct.
Do the tenants also get a separate mailing or just the owner, property owner?
It's just the property owner. Yep, in case you couldn't hear that, the applicant does have some additional information to share regarding that.
Okay, any other questions?
I noticed, I noticed there was foundations already installed, those are within the?
It's shifted, yes. So what would, what would end up happening is they wouldn't have that outdoor space anymore, so their programming would be impacted.
Okay.
Yep.
But it's installed appropriately?
The foundations would meet the Mid-American requirements, yeah.
Okay. So the foundation for the building is, is good to go, it's just whether or not they can have that, that additional oning facing south?
Correct.
Gotcha, gotcha.
All right, any other questions? As the petitioner here, would you please come forward, introduce yourself and present your request?
Hi, I'm Joshua R. Weld, the Streamline Architects, I'm here with Ann Schwickerath with Project Renewal. So the project, when it began, we did our due diligence and had extensive conversations with planning and zoning department to identify all our constraints upfront like we normally do. And as Laura mentioned, it wasn't until Mid-American mentioned that the power lines require a 10-foot setback and so that caused us to move the building to the, to the south and then the encroachment on the buffer yard. So currently, the foundation that's poured is just for the building, we haven't poured anything for the porch or the covered patio yet pending this hearing, of course, so, but just a little background with Project Renewal, it's really a fortunate opportunity to work with them, I think we've been in front of you before already and you've kind of heard that background, so, but as far as Project Renewal and the neighbor goes, I'll let Ann speak to that.
Did you get the letter from our, the owner of the apartment house next to us? I'll read it to you if you don't mind.
Yeah, please do.
Steve Claw is the property owner that we're going to be neighboring or that we share the property line from, he has an apartment house there with five apartments in it, he's a great landlord and keeps good tenants as best as possible. He said, "I am very pleased to write this letter in support of Project Renewal's application for variance. My adjoining property at 832 West 5th Street has been in my family since about 1950. I have seen the neighborhood transition through the years. I am very pleased to say that Project Renewal's presence and mission contribute immeasurably to our safety and stability. I am fully supportive of their new construction to offer more opportunities for youth development, family and neighborhood stability. I am confident of their abilities and trust their plans will only enhance the existing environment. I value the oversight they provide, not only for their own property, but also for the tenants on the property that I own at 832 West 5th Street, Davenport, Iowa. From my perspective, the granting of the buffer yard variance is desirable to allow them to meet their goals and at the same time, I am assured they will be good stewards of the green space between our adjacent properties. Historically, Project Renewal has been an excellent neighbor and I look forward to the good work they will continue to do. Their mission promotes and improves the quality of life for our neighborhood residents as well as the youth and families they serve. Please grant Project Renewal's buffer yard variance to ensure they can continue to progress with their plans without any further delays and expense that would create a hardship. Sincerely, Steve Claw, 1732 Skyline Drive, Bettendorf, Iowa."
Thank you. Thank you.
Ann, after this meeting, can I make a copy of that? Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board to the petitioners?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
All right. All right, thank you. Laura, can you go back to the, the map of the city streets?
This one, or?
Yeah, that's Warren Street, and what's the cross street to the south?
It's Fifth Street to the south.
So they're, they're on the, they're on the alley between Fifth and Fourth?
Yes, so to the north is an alley.
Okay.
So normally, in the zoning code, alleys don't count as like a corner yard or anything like that, so it wouldn't be an increased setback. It's just a normal side yard setback in the zoning district. I think that it's, it was five feet.
Right. But then the power lines made it a 10.
Right.
All right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak opposed to the request? Applicant, any final comments? All right, we're good. Board discussion? Comments, concerns?
I think it's pretty straightforward, that it's acceptable.
Yeah, I remember, I remember this coming through with the, with the off-street parking, and everything was squared away, other than, than the utility company.
I mean, the apartment complex has a small fence there, so they already have a, with demarcation, so to speak, for their property.
I don't have any concerns. If there's no other comments or discussion, I will accept the motion to approve HV 24-07.
I'll make that motion to, to approve HV 24-07.
Second. Roll call, though, please.
Galliard?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Blumker?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, you go, thank you. There is another new business or other business, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
You stand adjourned.
Just a reminder, next meeting will be May 23rd.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.